Evening, everyone. Stormy evening. We had a special council meeting tonight, and I would ask Liz if she would read off those two items, please. I'm sorry.
They are. Item number one, conference with labor negotiator, Galt Police Officers Association and the Galt Public Service Unit, the agency negotiator, Eddie Kreisberg. And number two, conference with real property negotiator, negotiating parties, Jason Bearman, city manager, and Ty and Monica Beekman.
Okay, thank you. I'd ask the city attorney if he has anything to report.
Mr. Mayor, council members, there's no reportable action on either of those items this evening.
Okay, thank you. We will now open the regular council meeting at 7:01. If I could have the roll call, please.
Yes, council members, Payne, here. Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Sheldon?
Here. I'd like everyone to rise for silent prayer, a moment of silence. Remain standing, please, for the flag salute presented to us by Cub Scout Pack Eighty-Four, Den Two.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. And [inaudible] one nation, under God, in a visible loyalty and justice for all. Two. [inaudible].
Thank you, scouts. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda approval, addition, or deletion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to pull item G three entirely.
Pull it entirely?
Yes, we'll bring this back at the February second meeting if necessary.
What's the reasoning?
Difficulties. We missed the notice requirement by two days, even though we had noticed the same intent back in November. In conference with the city attorney's office, they thought it was best if we had a clean notice and start over again.
Okay. Did you say technical difficulties? That's what I'm having tonight. We need to have video statements. Thank you. I jumped ahead.
That's okay. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and SherWest Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. I don't believe there was any other deletions or changes. We'll move to any presentations, none, and public comment, and I just was handed one.
Under Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. John Slaughterback?
John Slaughterback. I live in the city of Galt. Good news tonight. This is my last night. I'm burnt out. I'm going to move on and let somebody else take this. It's been upsetting for a few years, and I'm at the stage where I'm ready to give this up. So tonight, I do have a few things I want to say, though. Most of you got a copy of some information here, but I'd like to also... Jason, at the last city council meeting, you asked council, what do you want? Do you want a reduction in impact fees? I couldn't tell whether you were asking council for direction or if you were given an okay for a reduction in impact fees. I would like to think that a leader of the city would give direction to council for what he believes is in the best interest of the city. I couldn't tell last time what it was you... whether you were asking for direction or what you were after there. But I think you should have made it more clear, and I think you should be interested in what's in the best interest of the city. And even if the city were to reduce impact fees, the developers still would have problems selling homes because there are no longer any available loans to unqualified home buyers as there were during the housing boom. We had this exotic financing, and everybody was buying a home. And some of the cities did increase impact fees while these homes' prices were being inflated. And I gave you a list there of where some of them went up to ninety or a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know exactly what they say, a hundred thousand, but I think it was somewhere around ninety thousand dollars some of these cities went up to. Rancho Cordova, this is Rancho Cordova, Sacramento Business Journal, May the twelfth, two thousand six, developer fees may raise above one hundred thousand, and you've got a printout of that. The Munchhead Sun Star, September the seventh, two thousand seven, developer perks may be on the chopping block. Mike Gutcher said Elk Grove and Williams has already reduced their developer impact fees, but like I said, other cities also increased impact fees. They reduced them when the economy went flat, but they increased them when they had a boom, and we didn't do that in Galt. And if this city is going to compare itself with another city, then that comparison should be with Elk Grove, the city that Galt competes with for home sales, not Loda. I don't think we should be comparing ourselves with Loda. I don't know what impact fees are in Elk Grove, but if we want to compare ourselves with somebody, let's compare it with Elk Grove. Elk Grove has two entities that I don't think that council, the city touches, and that is the wastewater and the sewer, wastewater, and the water. I don't think those two, those are two separate entities that council or the city doesn't have any control over. So if you're going to compare somebody with somebody, do it with Elk Grove. Sacramento Business Journal, January the ninth, two thousand ten, the city appears to be illegally using utility funds to pay for general expenses and to help with developer-related projects. Personally, I think we've got some of that problem of that here in Galt. I see some stances of money that we spend on different things that I feel that we're using sewer funds for projects out of the wastewater, for instance, that should be developer. I've tried to say so in past councils, and here we know that it happens. Audits do not indicate whether utility funds are being used illegally for other purposes. Now, Ted Anderson used to say, well, we can't be doing anything out of line, we're being audited. Auditors don't tell you that funds are being manipulated in different spots, I don't believe, you know, transferred around. We just transferred four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars out of the sewer fund and the developer's fund. I never did understand that. Greg tried to explain it to me, but I still, it went above my head while we were going back to two thousand and five to take these funds out. And with that, I hope I don't see you for a long time in here. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Okay, Al Baldwin? Do you want to... Let's wait for the item, I'm sorry. Gary Tuttle?
Good evening. My name's Gary Tuttle. I live in the county, just on the edge of the city, but I do have a business here. And the thing that I wanted to bring up tonight was, I've had several people come in the restaurant, and they are not real happy with the bus service. They asked if I would mention it to somebody. They said it takes forty-five minutes to an hour and a half for a bus to come to them. One gentleman said he had to go all the way out to Harold before they'd drop him off at Rayleigh's, and another person was saying that he's called two hours in advance, and they forget to come get him, he's been late to work. They just don't feel that since the new company's taken over that they're being really efficient or, you know, whatever can be done, I don't know. But just thought I'd bring it to somebody's attention, so...
While you're here, that's actually a good lead-in to another thing come up. Secog's going to be having the unmet transit needs hearing here, tentatively, the twenty-fifth, which is a Thursday at four in the afternoon of February. So if we can, Liz, send you a little note if you want to put it up.
Okay.
When it's set, for sure.
I can give you one right now.
And that, the whole purpose of that is to hear from the public about unmet transit needs, transportation.
Okay.
So, yeah, it'd be good.
Yeah, I'd be glad to put it up.
Okay. Oh, you are prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any other speakers?
That's all the speakers I have right now.
Information consent calendar. Three items.
On the consent calendar tonight, we have three items. Number one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular council meetings of January fifth, two thousand and ten. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. And number three, real property acquisition, Horizon Community Church, Central Galt Interchange Project.
Any questions or comments? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. No further discussion. We'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Next item. See what scheduled matters, none, regular calendar.
Kansas City Council, first item, city departments mentoring local youth. Vice Mayor Payne.
As you may remember, Jim Miller, project manager for Emerge, was here a few meetings ago, asking the city to endorse the principles of the compact to our youth. The principles include invest in children and youth, fosters caring adults, create safe places, provide a healthy start, support an effective education, and promote community participation and involvement. Emerge is asking that the city allow members of our youth council, our youth commission, to set an appointment and interview our departments with this two-page survey. It should take about thirty minutes, but because it will take staff time, I'd like to get approval from the council to go along with that. The survey is here for you to review. Our city manager has already reviewed it and has given his okay on it, and it's not designed specifically for the city, so some of the questions may not be applicable. Galt has been looked at by other jurisdictions involved in youth programs as kind of a model because of our youth master plan, our youth commission, our task committee, which is city and schools working together, and just the general priority of youth in our community. The goal of this survey is simply to network what we're doing, make it available to other communities if they have an interest in doing the master plan like we're doing here, a youth master plan, or to establish a youth commission or committee. We're not asking for you to actually mentor, set up a mentoring program. In the past, we've done that without really realizing that we were doing that. I know our parks department is totally involved with our youth, but some of the least expected ones, like Public Works, have been involved with our youth with our Safe Routes to School Program, which they worked very closely with Public Works, and the result was a grant that will make the streets safer, so hopefully we can get more exercise for our youth to help keep them healthier. Our police department has an ongoing program with their cadets, so we are involved currently, and we just want to record that, share it with other communities, and at the same time, think and look for other ways that our departments might mentor with youth. We're not suggesting that they, at this time, try to set up a program, just, you know, look for opportunities. So at this time, I would ask for consensus approval for our... Okay.
No, I'm sorry, we have a speaker.
Okay.
Someone wanted to speak, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You're on a roll, but sorry. If they still want to speak.
Al Baldwin?
Liz just reminded me that she was wrapping up.
Okay.
Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, community of character. Yes, I'm back to the character thing because we're getting more and more people to win these... to get these awards. It's amazing. But since I saw a council member, Payne, in the agenda here, and she was bringing up mentoring, and I didn't have a chance to talk to her before, but I still have the opportunity to bring it up on the agenda because it said mentoring, and I thought it was something else. It's along the same lines, but I do believe that mentoring is probably one of the best things a city can do, especially with its council and other leaders, to help our youth in Galt. And I know this is a little bit off of what Barbara was saying, but I didn't check into it. I guess I should have tried to find out more of what it meant, but it said mentoring our youth, and that's a real good area to get into. And I don't know if you know this, but do you know that mentoring youth are forty-six percent likely to get into... less likely to get into drugs? And drugs are a main problem right now in Galt and other places. Also, fifty-nine percent get better grades when they're mentored. Seventy-three percent raise their personal goals, and that's a lot, it's a high percentage. Mentoring is not really that hard, but I'll give you a few little extras here on mentoring. And you must be honest with your mentee, and that's what they call the person that you're mentoring to. And you must follow through with your promises and admit when you are wrong. And that's when you're on a personal level, by the way, with people. And for years, about five years, I guess, I made suggestions to certain council people and other people in the community that I would love to see a mentoring program, possibly two months, maybe three months, for each council member. Now, I know this is a real stretch. It doesn't mean you have to be involved with them every single day, but you could be involved with them maybe once or twice a month to explain what you're doing, the position you're handling, and maybe even our city manager and other people in the city could even get involved with this. It's not a time thing. You can do it on your own time, you can email them, keep in contact that way. But to know that they have somebody they can ask about the city they're living in, that possibly when they graduate and they get into the real world, and especially if they stay in Galt, they might be able to even run for council like Andrew did, and other people can. It's a program that I'm sure that would go over very well. You must be consistent in your communications and appointments with your mentee. A phone call or email is a great way to stay in touch when traveling or even when schedules become busy. Daryl goes to Washington, wouldn't that be amazing if he had somebody? He was emailing back saying, I talked to Senator so-and-so, and I saw President Obama. I mean, something like that, they will feel so good that they're involved a little bit with, and that's just enough to push them up, just something that small. You can be helpful so that they can learn to do things for themselves. Don't be the one that solves their problems, let them do it. Don't think for them, let them think for themselves. These are all just things that mentoring does. I would highly recommend that you strongly consider a mentoring program if it comes up in the future, that if you have the opportunity to do it, I would suggest you jump on it because it's only going to help them. Believe me, I think it's going to help you, too. So you could even have it with the attorney. I mean, he could even do it. And it's not time-consuming, really. It's just that much time can make that much difference in some youth. So anyway, when I saw it, it's not exactly along the same lines, but when it didn't explain that in here, I couldn't bring it up to see. So just to let you know, that's my thoughts on it, and I would love to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I would ask consensus of the council to allow our youth commissioners, our youth committee, to have about thirty minutes' time with the department heads to complete the survey, which will go on to Emerge and be used as a networking tool.
Good with me.
I'm fine with that.
Fine with it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the next item we have?
Next item, Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management Board attending in Claire's absence. Council member Claire?
Yeah, I don't know if this has really come up much, but I'm not going to be able to attend the air quality board meeting because I will be in Washington, DC next week. They don't honor, like Secog, a standing alternate that can act in my place, but they honor an alternate if I want the alternate to go, to just be aware of what's going on and all, so as opposed to Secog, where if I'm not there, the alternate sits in my seat and acts accordingly, votes accordingly. So we've never addressed this, and I know I won't be there, so I was wondering if someone would like to be appointed as the alternate. I don't think at this specific meeting there's anything I need someone to go for. It just made me realize that if we do, there isn't a person that's already selected by the council to be that person, so that's why I bring it forward.
When did they meet?
The fourth Thursday of most months, not every month. In the fall, they tend not to meet in December, and sometimes they don't meet in November. So as I say, I don't need anyone to go next week, it just made me be aware of it for anything in the future.
Is there a council member that would like to do that?
It's Thursday, it's the fourth Thursday of the month. Usually it runs between nine-thirty and eleven-thirty or noon.
Is someone trying to point someone over there?
I've just got the look on his face like he'd like to do that.
No, I think it's a great idea personally to have an alternate just in case, you know, because it is important to have someone there.
I agree.
Yeah, I can do it in Daryl's absence if council's okay with that.
I'm good with that.
Sure. Great, thank you. Thanks for volunteering. Okay, the next item, which was Public Works, is pulled.
Pulled, and the next item was pulled. That takes us to the City White Traffic Capital Improvement Program, Northeast Area Public Facilities Program, and Community Facilities Fees Update.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a carryover from the January fifth, two thousand and ten meeting. At that meeting, council received a progress report from staff and Marty Inoue with omni-means relative to the progress we've made on the two thousand and nine update to the traffic construction improvement program, Northeast Area Fee Program, and the Community Facilities Fee Program. At that time, council asked staff to come back with more information relative to a breakdown of actual projects and costs for each of the two thousand and six update and two thousand and nine update, a breakdown of some sort of the park facility costs. They also asked us to look into possible separate methodologies for reducing fees for certain select smaller businesses, commercial retail, as opposed to larger, say, above a hundred thousand square feet with smaller traffic generating characteristics. And they also asked for some input relative to the differences in the fees that we showed staff, showed council relative to different cities, what may or may not be responsible for some of the differences. Council also asked that we bring back information from developers. We did have the developers forum meeting last Thursday, and we brought back some information to the council of what was discussed and what the input of developers. Copies of the project list for two thousand and six and the two thousand and update were included in your agenda packet. This showed the various projects that were included in both of the updates and explained the difference in the total TCIP, Northeast Area Fee Costs that were shown in the PowerPoint presentation last time. In addition to just different projects, we had a deletion of the completed projects, we had a re-sculping of some projects, we added a whole slew of new projects for the new general plan build-out area. We also enrolled all of the Northeast Area Improvement Projects into the TCIP for the two thousand and nine updates, and last, we updated all the cost estimates to reflect current construction costs. We also included some tables from the draft report that Marty's prepared for the Community Facilities Fee Updates. This tells you what some of the improvement project, the specific items that are going to be purchased with those funds. In regards to the possible establishment of a reduced fee, we took a look at that, but a big hurdle with AB sixteen hundred. This says that any fee that we establish has to have a nexus to the development that creates that need. We have to match the... the impact has to match what they provide to the solution. It's very difficult, therefore, to take this same use, commercial use, retail use, and make a distinction on size when the need is based upon trip generation rates. So in order to make some kind of distinction, we have to find some characteristic or some methodology that we can attribute different trip characteristics to one business versus the other in order to make that distinction. Council can artificially reduce the fee for a mom-and-pop type store or something below a hundred thousand square feet, but what they can't do is take that offset of that reduction, that whole, if you will, and then put that on to the other members of the group to make them pay more. Council could fund that through some other funding source, or that could be left as a whole in the program. There's no requirement that we totally fund the program. Staff is somewhat struggling with other ways to come up with a way to offset fees that would appease the council, but also that would be fair to the development committee who would survive a challenge to AB sixteen hundred. Did want to point out, as in the staff report, that in many cases, the actual trip generation per square foot or per hundred square feet actually goes down as you get into much bigger facilities, so it's kind of going backwards where some council members may want to go with this. But we're still continuing to try to investigate methodologies and hoping to engage the council in a discussion about that tonight. We did also include a memorandum from Marty's staff about the possible changes or differences in some of the fees. It's kind of difficult to, at first glance, look at a fee and say, well, this is a development fee. Well, what's included, you don't really know. Depends on the magnitude. It's kind of like asking how much does a car cost? Depends a lot on what's in the car, how old it is, how many bells and whistles, and when it was last priced. And so the memo does provide some insight to council to help you understand why they vary so much. It would be a significant undertaking to try to go through and nail down exactly what some of those fee differences are a result of. Last thing I want to point out is that we did have a very successful developers forum meeting last Thursday. It was very well-attended, a lot of good comments back from the developers in the community. We had some very good notes taken, and we presented those to the council relative to the input we got from the development community. We did receive one letter that was included along with the notes. I believe council and staff received a second letter this morning. I think you received that in your box as well. Overall, the developers believe the fees are too high, and they're looking to have the council consider whether the council wants to artificially reduce those fees or lower the fees. lower the fees, in order to stimulate growth in the community. There was some discussion about how far the fees would have to be lowered, in order to make that economically feasible, and some developers here tonight, they may wish to address the council. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Marty to make some additions, and we'll open up the council discussion.
Actually, I'm here to answer any specific questions. Again, my name is Marty Inoue, project manager for this project, and Victor Ursick from Goodwin Consulting, and we're here to answer any further questions that you may have. I believe any of the questions that, beyond those responded to by Greg, we should be able to answer.
Any questions from council members?
I'd like to hear a public comment first, if that's okay with council.
We have no speakers. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak?
I do, we're waiting.
Mike Guthrie, General Park Company. Good evening. I guess my issue is still back to, and everybody's got the sheet, I think it says, on the sheet that came on the thing last time at the council meeting, and we still have this $295 million. Gentlemen, I'm going to go right back to what was in the Northeast Area. Fifteen million, fifty-eight million dollar payout. You've got $295 million now. I know we're going to take some of the things out, because there's some interchanges in here, and there's things that'll probably be taken out of the plan, but let's say if it wasn't $295, let's say it was a hundred million. You've got to, you're going to have to fund this through a Melrose or a 1911 Bond Act, something like that. In most cases, when we did it in the Northeast Area, it was two and a half times as great. So, if you take two and a half times, a hundred million is $250 million. Then you've got to spread that over the cost of what the land is, like I said before. The question I have is, you've got land between Marengo and Cherokee, like I said, the land that we had there where Walmart was, seventeen years, $50,000 a year. Now, I just don't think that those people out there, and remember, when it was the Northeast Area, it was six developers that owned most of the land. Today, if you go out there, I don't know if there's one developer that owns that land. YTH, as you know, they ran into bankruptcy problems. There's maybe a couple other developers, maybe on options, but I'm talking about truly owning the land. And so, I think those are the things you've got to think about, when you look at this cost, and how you're going to fund it. Thank you.
Mike, are you suggesting that when we're looking at these fees, that we also need to look at the cost of financing?
Well, you know, I've been saying that for a year and a half. Guys, you better be looking at how you're going to finance this thing, because, you know, it's got to be, it's going to have to be financed through a Melrose, or 1911 Bond Act, or something similar to that. I mean, the developer is not going to come out of his pocket with anything such close to what we're talking about here. Because remember, there are going to be fifty acres, or twenty acres, or whatever. How are you going to fund something like this? Even talking about the sewer line, for example, that you're going to run from Marengo to the sewer plant, at, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five inches in diameter, thirty-two inches in diameter, fourteen feet in the ground, or twenty feet in the ground? That's two to three million, four million dollars right there. I mean, some of these things, I don't know how you're going to fund them, and try to get the, and try to move forward with homes and retail and commercial. It's very difficult. And why I know a little bit about even that, if you think about Laguna Ridge, up in Elk Grove, look what has happened there. They stalled, and look how many subdivisions have gone in foreclosure up there, and so on. And, you know, you can go around, you've got four model homes, and you've got fifty lots, and four model homes and fifty lots. The costs just killed them. They didn't get it done in time, the city held them up, because there's some other things going on, and so, and now they sit. There's a lot, if anybody's driven up there, it's sort of sad. Thank you.
Marty, how does that affect the fees? The financing that he's talking about, does that then make the fees go up? I'm not getting the connection there.
Right. What I understand Mr. Guthrie is saying is that the cost may be $15 million, or the cost may be $295 million. But if you enter into a Melrose, that there's financing, there's bond financing, and then, similar to your home, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, is that if you had, for example, a thirty-year mortgage, you know what you're paying for your house, but at the end of that thirty years, you know, you see that financial charge, and it's probably double, or close to it, over that period of time, what it actually costs you, if you made monthly payments, you know, for the next thirty years. Plus, the cost of the bond, setting up the district and things like that. What the $295 million is, is the cost of the physical improvements that are necessary to support build-out of the transportation system, to support build-out of the city's general plan, land use plan. That's what the cost is. If they pay their fees, over time, as development occurs, there are specific areas where there can be incremental widening, there can be new, you know, the Central Gulf Interchange, the inner improvement to Twin Cities. Those are improvements that are being paid for by fees collected. There are new areas that may, that we may need, that the city may need new infrastructure ahead of when new development occurs, to provide a backbone system. And an example of that may be in the North Area, North of Twin Cities, that maybe there needs to be a backbone similar to the Northeast Area when that area develops. There was nothing out there in 1989, so they needed to create a backbone system of basic roads, of sewer, water storms, and they entered into a public financing district, or a Melrose district, to provide that backbone, to provide the initial funds, to provide that backbone. And then, the fee program that has been initiated back, as far back as 1980, has, over time, supplemented that original base cost to provide for the expansion of the system, to provide the additional lanes required, to provide improvements to Twin Cities, to Walnut, to Corillian, and then also complete out sewer systems, to continue to build wells, to add to your trail system, and landscaping along Deadman's Gulch. All of those things were a part of that combination of financing, of a Melrose for the base infrastructure, and then the fee program. If there's areas within the city that they choose, that you choose to accept a financing district, you can do that, but there's a cost to that money over time, in that financing district. Relative to this program, we can tell you what the costs are, we can tell you what the fees are that are associated to that, and it's something separate than what Mr. Guthrie is talking about.
I'm glad you brought up 1989. As part of the work that you're doing with the city, have you gone back and looked at the historical nature of what happened in the Northeast Area, and the capital improvement fees that we collected back then to mitigate the effects of the development on that side of town?
What we have done is, yes, we needed to start from the, when we originally updated, and Vic and I were both involved, and contracted by the city in 2003, to update those fees from 1989. In terms of, so we needed to, and maybe Vic can talk more specifically, in terms of the audit of what was constructed under the base infrastructure and...
We don't need to go into much detail. What I'm really looking at, I'm looking to find out if, in your opinion, back in 1989, did we not accomplish all of the necessary improvements that we should have, in order to facilitate the development that we have on the Northeast side of town? Because we'll hear developers come in and talk about how GULP's capital fees and our development fees have increased dramatically in the last fifteen years, but the way that I look at it, I don't think we were adequately funding the improvements back then, and we've systematically, over the last fifteen years, had to get back up to par, just to meet an equity level, where we're actually breaking even.
No, we didn't reexamine the financing strategies that went into that plan, because the strategies included Melrose funding, as well as fee financing and developer contributions. So, the scope of this work is limited to fees, in which case, we looked at the NEA fees, we looked at the balances and so forth, and we looked at what was funded in terms of roadway facilities through the CFVs, and applied that credit into the fee program. So, we didn't look at it in a comprehensive manner to see if, you know, whether it was running smoothly, or whether there were adjustments needed along the way.
The only thing I could also add to that was, the original fees were adopted back in 1989. The next update was our 2003 update.
Pretty self-explanatory.
Darryl, you were trying to get my attention.
Yeah, Andrew, finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm done. I'm not commenting.
I had a couple thoughts, because I'm not sure how we want to approach this tonight. We have a requirement to have a nexus study, and we have one here, right? Are we allowed to approve a fee that is equal to or less than this, without redoing the study? We can't go above it, but can we go equal to or below it, without changing what you've given us?
Well, in sum total, it's going to be about the same what you're charging, but there are certain components, like the park fee, for example, is going to be about thirty-six percent higher than your current fee. So, that component would need to be adopted.
Right.
Now, you can charge less for the other fee components, and you would not have to go through a whole process of adopting the fee. But for that one component, because it is an increase, you would have to go through the typical fee program adoption process.
Okay. And the reason I bring that up to council, as you know, I asked that we have the details, because I don't agree with some of the details, but the outcome of what I'm just looking for tonight, isn't so much to lower it, it's just not to raise it. So, if we're not going to, I don't need to go through point by point the ones I would take out tonight, but if we do, then we ought to start getting into that kind of detail. So, let me lead to where I'm going. First off, for simple mathematics, if our fee was a thousand dollars, and no homes are being built, it doesn't matter if it's a thousand, ten thousand, or a hundred thousand, nothing happens, no one's building a house. If we lowered it ten dollars or a hundred dollars, and someone builds ten houses, and we think it should have been stated a thousand, but we drop to nine hundred, we're now ten times one hundred, or one thousand dollars behind, if you will, on our current general plan. I think we're a long ways between now and the next hundred houses that are going to get built. So philosophically, I don't think, right now, unless you want to, we need to have a huge debate over all this, because for now, almost anything we do tonight, unless we do something drastic, probably won't matter much. So, my next question is, when can we look at this again, if philosophically, we don't want to go through all that much detail right now, and if suddenly, it looks like someone's going to build a hundred or two hundred houses, are we free to reevaluate this at any time? To either legal or staff?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can reevaluate it at any time that you want, even if you adopt the fee. You can always revisit it a month later, if you wanted to. I think the only challenge you have, as far as not adopting any of the new fees, is that we have an exit study now, in particular, in some cases, where it shows the fee going lower. So, if you don't adopt that fee, then there could be...
Keep in mind, where I'm going, if you remember my comments, was basically adopting what we've been presented, but it netted in total a small increase. I just want to take the small away and end up at a net-net. And if we all kind of agree with that, if someone wants to reduce it, then I guess we should talk about that. But otherwise, like I say, I want to start talking about the Walnut Interchange, the Simmerhorn realignment, I mean...
So, you're saying the ones that were projected to go down, for example, like traffic, that was going down a certain percentage for commercial, and a certain percentage for residential, those would go down. The ones that were projected to go up, like the parks fees, we just wouldn't touch that fee and leave it where it currently is?
No.
Is that what you're saying?
In total, I'm saying. So, the park would go up...
But you have to look at them all individually, because they're separate fees?
No, I know. So, the question, one of the questions asked is, we can revisit this at any time, and we are within our legal guidelines, as long as the study we have justifies a number up here, we may approve anything up to or below that number. Correct? Okay. So, then, the next question to council is, do we tonight want to start going through project by project? Because I'm in favor of taking a number of these off, if we're going to use that basis to go all the way up. Starting with the Walnut Interchange, and then I'd like to hear about Simmerhorn and some of the others. So, I just don't know how much time you want to take tonight, going through each of the project.
Another question, when you think it's appropriate?
Well, we need an answer for his question first. Or does it feel...
Well, that's a question to the council, is kind of what everyone else is thinking they want to end up at tonight.
I don't think we're ready to do that, but go ahead, Barbara, you have...
My question is in regards to the parks, and I thought I heard you say that, or maybe it was you, Jason, that we couldn't adjust that. That's an area that I have a real concern about, with the parks. I think we also need to think about, once we get the parks, we have to maintain them, and that maintenance, as we talked about, I think the previous council meeting, can affect our general fund. So, I know that we worked on the master park plan, park master plan, what we would like ideally to happen, but I'm thinking if it's going to put us out of market, I'll put it that way, to attract developers, then we need to take another look at it, because we're not going to get it if we don't have any growth going on. And we need to be, in my mind, my business mind, we need to be competitive if we want to attract enough growth to provide us with what we want for the future. I don't think it's enough to say that we're just going to hold our fees where they are. I think we're competing with Elk Grove, that has a population of over a hundred thousand, where whoever goes into business there, or develops there, they probably have a better chance of being successful, whether it's a developer, or retail, or whatever. So, I feel like we should aggressively try to attract some growth, and people don't get crazy on me, I'm not saying that we should turn into an Elk Grove, but I think we, it's clear to me, we want to shop here in our own town, and we haven't had a lot of success with attracting businesses to provide the kind of shopping that the citizens want. I think that's going to come from reaching a certain population. And like I said, I feel that if we really want to serve the community, that we need to be aggressively seeking some development. And from what I read about the meeting, that's kind of what I'm hearing from the developers too. But I didn't get that question answered about the parks. Is that something that can't be changed, without redoing the whole...
That's correct. Currently, the draft park fee is thirty-six percent higher than your current fee, so because it is increasing, you have to adopt the park fee.
Why?
Because the law says, any time you increase a fee, it needs to be adopted.
If you have to adopt the full amount. You have a study that says it's warranted, that there's a legal requirement to adopt it.
No, you don't have to adopt it. You can always keep it at its current rate, or lower it.
Or anywhere up to the amount that's set forward in the report.
That's what I'm trying to make the point, that that's the ceiling. We have a studies that support that as the ceiling. We have... that support that as the ceiling, we have leeway anywhere between where we are and that number without getting any more studies done. So, we could stay where we are, we could go up a dollar, we can go the whole thing. And again, realizing that if you accept the list, which I don't, but if you do, we're only falling behind by whatever we don't raise it times each house that gets built.
Or each business that we bring in.
Or each business.
Which could be, could be substantial, looking at some of the projects that we've got presented.
Yep.
I'm just, I'm still surprised, uh, it seems like we were expecting to hear something different at this developers' meeting than you guys need to lower rates to make us more successful. Were we expecting the developers to come to the meeting and tell us, we want you guys to raise your fees to make equity? I mean, we, Daryl made a, made a great analogy. We've established that a thousand dollars, for example, is our break-even point to provide the infrastructure needed to facilitate growth. We lower to nine hundred, yeah, we bring in the growth for now, but we're pushing off a one hundred dollar deficit into the future. And in nineteen eighty-nine, and between that point to two thousand and three, that's exactly what we did. We kept pushing and pushing and pushing, two thousand and three hit, and eventually we had to do something about it. And when we did, developers like Mr. Guthridge, they didn't like it, and they complained about how it wasn't fair, but we're here, elected by the citizens of this community, to make sure that when developers come into this community, they pay their fair share so that the ratepayers don't have to subsidize developers creating projects in this community. So, from a philosophical standpoint, I, I can't agree with going anything below what it is actually going to cost us to provide the improvements to facilitate development. And if that's what the fee structure shows that we're presented with, then that's all support.
Okay, well, then that sounds like we ought to go through the list, because everything here is based on the list, as they say, I don't agree with the list. If, for example, on the list was a hundred million dollars to start a new Disneyland, it would equal a number divided by everything else of a hundred million. If we agree we're not going to start a new Disneyland for a hundred million, then the numbers are wrong.
I agree. There are projects on here that I think all five of us know we're never going to build.
I, I agree with you.
If, if we're going to hold at that number, then it sounds like we ought to go through the list.
In answer to Andrew's question, when, uh, they were very receptive to what was going on, I, maybe I was the only person there, and staff had a different opinion, but I was under the impression that there was going to be about four or five of them here tonight and, you know, kind of continue the dialogue. I know there was a couple of them that wrote little letters, you know, sent memos to us, but, uh, that's the impression that I got, and actually, Mike was the only one that could make it tonight for, uh, various things that are going on. Uh, I, I guess while I'm here, I'm, I'm not in favor in increasing any salaries or salaries at any fees currently. I know that the developers, they know that they're going to have to pay now, they're going to have to pay later, but with, and I know the economy is, circles around it, but I believe we pulled, what was it? How many permits just for single-family residents, like one or two?
One.
One.
It was one.
Yeah. Businesses over the last year was about six, seven.
I believe it wasn't very many.
Yeah, half a dozen. Yeah. But I think before, in my opinion, before we can make that sound judgment, and I agree with Daryl, and I agree with Andrew, that partly, we need to sit down and go over these projects, because there's a lot of them here, before I can absolutely vote.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject-
I don't want to prolong anything either.
If I can interject one, one point, just to help the council keep in perspective, these are not a wish list of projects. We talked at the, about some of the park projects, about the, the, whether we have Cadillac Parks, we have Ugo Parks, we have some discretion in those types of things, but the improvements that you see in these lists, these are improvements that are necessary to build out the general plan, and they've been covered by the environmental documents as being necessary. And so, it's, it's, you're going into troubled waters if you want to pick, okay, we're going to cut this one off because it's expensive, we, this one, we're going to get this one gone here, because the traffic that is supported by the general plan is going to come from the general plan builder, it's got to go somewhere, and you're creating potential problems of, okay, we're going to save some money now, but that is necessary to support the general plan, and there are issues if you don't support what was the approved general plan. To go back and have to revisit that, I don't know how far you can cut those projects. You might be able to scale them back somewhat, you might be able to establish a phasing or a priority for those projects and say, we're going to concentrate on funding these certain projects first, but caution the council about just totally cutting some projects. At some point in time, you may have to go back and reevaluate the impact it has on the general, uh, general plan build-out.
Well, if I may, in the general, well, the numbers in the general plan in this seem to vary a little, but in this document, you have an assumption of a population, which you've given us. We all believe, as did Secog, a number of population projections when we started this process five or six years ago. Sitting here tonight, those are all wrong. We know they're wrong, Secog knows they're wrong, everybody knows they're wrong. Nobody's building out at the rate everybody projected we would be, and in just five years, we're already off track to the good because we're going slower. So, maybe we do need to relook at it, because we're all assuming some things that aren't happening, as are our elementary school district and our high school district. Go back three to five years and look at their population projections, Fairsite's not even here anymore. They don't even need it. So, you know, I guess we're going to need some input as to what is our leeway? Since you brought the point up, what is our leeway? And if we have no leeway, then what do we need to do to create something?
Unfortunately, when I brought it up, I'm wishing Kurt was here, uh, to allow my depth here. Um, you, also, just, you, there is no, in terms of the fee and the, and the project build-out, there is no time to build out. You're talking about ultimate build-out. Now, we can talk about absorption rates and when we need to have projects by when-
Sure.
-that we can talk about, but we still, you look at total build-out, if your fee program takes you to total build-out, then that's what you're looking at. It's not, this is-
And that's what I was trying to say in my first comment, is that I don't see any need tonight, whether we go through the list or not, however you want to do it, to adopt fees equalling this total list. I just don't. A, we're not on that kind of track, not anytime soon, and B, as I said before, unless someone starts building a bunch of houses, it's a little irrelevant anyway, and then the philosophical discussion is, if we could cause an effect, and I don't know that we can, we can't cut the fees. If we eliminated the fees, it's not going to turn the housing market around, let's face it.
Yeah, we're not living in a bubble here.
No.
Not the only city that is issuing one housing permit-
Right.
-for twenty-five thousand residents.
So, the question is, as a policy, what we want to achieve in the short term, where do we go tonight? Because having heard what I just heard, for example, if I propose, you know what, we were going to build the walnut interchange once, and it was a great idea back when they proposed it, and Caltrans didn't have the one-mile spacing, and the cost was blah, 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 and that plan fell apart, and they gave everybody their money back and said, forget it, we're not going to build it. Now, it's back on here again, which, again, so there's no misunderstanding, our consultants have done what we asked them. I am not implying they haven't done what they were asked to do. Given the list, I wouldn't put it on the list of a fee to be included in tonight. It's not even close to my priorities to have a walnut interchange. So, how do you want to proceed? And, and having heard what we just heard, what can we do to proceed?
We make a recommendation, but also address the comment about the walnut interchange. We talked about specific improvements, and the issue you have with any of those improvements in the program, they're all necessary for the traffic that's going to be generated by the new general plan build-out. Even if it happened two thousand years from now, there's still going to be that traffic that's going to be generated. So, the traffic models don't work in, in GALT without a walnut interchange. So, at some point, that's going to have to be constructed, or you're going to have level of service passed at some of these roadways within the city. So, all of those right roadways, all the improvements in that plan are necessary to make the, the traffic circulation work within the city.
When the city reaches that-
When it builds up.
Correct. But if that's, but I'll give you less than two thousand years. If that's fifty years from now, I don't think it serves our community to, to worry about that fee tonight.
And that's fine. If, if the council wants to take things out and leave a temporary gap in the program, that certainly the council's prerogative to do that. Um, let me make a, potentially a recommendation for the council to consider. Um, several of the fees, because of the new general plan and the way those costs and so forth are spread over the new number of units that we have, traffic, for example, those fees are going down, and we actually couldn't leave the fees where they are or increase the fees, because the new fee study says they're actually going down by X amount. So, we should adopt a new traffic fee. So, in my opinion, that, that should be the end of the discussion on the traffic portion. Now, we, you could certainly argue that it should be less than that-
Right.
-if you want to take out additional programs. So, that's kind of the, the baseline there.
Right.
Um, north east area impact fees the same way. Those are going down because most of those improvements have been completed and so forth. Um, same with the general government fees, the, as those facilities have been spread across, those have gone, those fees have gone down. So, technically, we should be lowering each of those fees to correspond to the actual need or requirement based on the new development. The real, I think, question and the concern about raising fees comes from our park fee, and those are improvements largely that are not driven by, you know, uh, requirements about our own policies, on how much park land we want in our community, what type of facilities we want, what kind of bells and whistles and things we want. And so, I think, at least in my opinion, most of the discussion, if any, if you want to talk about whether we should increase park fees by thirty-six percent, should happen, the discussion should really focus on those fees, because those are the ones that are really driving the fees up, and if the council doesn't agree with increasing park fees right now, then we can certainly look at either one, just not adopting the new fee program for parks and just leaving it where it is right now, or adopting the new master plan that has all these things, but make a policy decision that we're just not going to implement that fee right now. We're going to essentially, we're going to collect less than we probably should for those facilities. So, there's a couple of different options of how you can handle the park fees, um, but the other one, since those are really, they should be going down because of the new nexus studies that we've done legally, we shouldn't be considering them, uh, to go up. But I think it maybe simplifies and consolidates some of the discussion in the areas instead of broadening it to the traffic, because I think the traffic is much more problematic when you start creating holes in that. And the fact that they're already going down, maybe that creates a little bit easier discussion for those fees. So, it's focused on just the park stuff, maybe it simplifies things.
And if to that, to the parks, the first one I would take off the park list is a second aquatic. I'd take the three million out for another aquatic center.
I agree.
Now, a future council, ten years from now, if there's a hundred more people here or a thousand or ten thousand, could decide if now they think they need one, but tonight I wouldn't support a park fee that includes three million dollars for a second aquatic center, and that's also partly based on, of all the things we maintain in our center, the aquatic center is one of the most expensive, problematic, somebody does you-know-what in the pool, and it has to be closed and cleaned, and I mean, it's just, it's a nice thing to have, I'm proud of the one we have in our community, I wouldn't support another three million dollar investment plus the maintenance cost of adding a second one anytime in the near future. So, I, I do agree with everything Jason said. I wouldn't go any higher than where we are. I'd like to make it at least neutral in a total. Transportation, I'm glad, is going down in total. I could suggest some ways to make it go down even further, and I'd like to see parks a little less than they are, but I philosophically agree they need to come up.
Come up?
From where they are now. But not up that much.
Okay.
I, I agree.
I think it, it makes sense for us to keep this all together as one document and, and vote on it accordingly. I don't think we should be piecing million out sections just because we think we've got it completely dialed in, because then we tie our hands at future meetings if we want to do something with the, different with the fee structure. So, I wouldn't necessarily support what Jason's talking about, which is moving forward with certain portions of this TCIP. I think we should just keep it all together, and if we, we want to extend this out till February and talk about it in more detail, then we do it as a whole document instead of in sections.
And in the meantime, come back maybe with some suggestions, recommendations, continue the dialogue.
Well, I, I like what Daryl was requesting, a list from staff on where we do have leeway, what projects we could get around.
Yeah, I'm receptive to that.
I'm good with that. I think that's a good idea.
Barbara, you, if, I mean, if we can do it that way.
You know what? I'm not sure where we are. I thought I heard that we couldn't make any changes, either in the parks or in the other. I thought, I heard you say we can't touch that.
No, if you were to adopt a higher fee, um, then you have to go through the, the adoption process, but if you were to keep the fee, the park fee at where it is right now, then you don't have to go through the adoption process.
So, we just need to decide, leave it as it is, up to thirty-six percent, or find some type of compromise.
Remind the council, back in two thousand and six, we raised, I think, a number of the fees, the councils had then, after raising the commercial fees. They let them at the, then the current rate. So, what that did was created a hole for any develop, commercial development that occurred from two thousand and six to now, we had collected a few million dollars in this river was left, redeveloped, but that's very similar to what the council's talking about doing, and that would be just approving a lower fee than what the study suggests is necessary to maintain that ultimate level. And you're, and you could then decide to backfill it some other way or, uh, come back in the future, revisit it, but you can adopt any fee up to that maximum.
Put it really simply, we don't know at this point, because we don't know what the drainage and water and sewer fees are going to be, we don't know, we can't tell a developer or builder how much the fees are going to be. Is that correct? Until you get the rest of that information. If that comes up really high, then we're still going to be out of the ballpark.
We don't know. We're in the process right now of nearing completion of the water, sewer, and stormdrain master plans. We are a ways off, though, from coming up with the, the actual fees that will come out of those relative to turning a list of improvements into a fee. Um, it's much more complicated for those facilities than it is for the roads. Here, we can have a master fee program that builds the center two lanes of a road, everybody contribute, we build that first, then allow development to occur, and then developers pay for the rest of drainage. We can't have a fee program pay for the middle portion of a big pipe. We have to put the whole pipe in the ground, so it's much, the financing is something Mr. Guthridge is bringing forth, that the financing plans are much more complicated for that. Um, I agree, that's something we have to worry about, but you got to, you got to do things in steps. We have to know what the project is, know what the cost is, to then figuring out what your financing is. You don't start with you want to finance a certain amount and then come back and make it fit. We've decided what the general plan is, what we want the community to look like, this is what the next step is. If we find out it all can be too expensive, then we have, may have to go back and make some other changes to what the ultimate, the community's going to look like. Um, the issue with the, the stormdrain, uh, water and drainage fees is, we will get to that point, but they're really separate. They're not at all independent with the road fees. For years, we've updated the TCIP. We've not gone back and changed the utility connection fees. We changed, we did not do that in two thousand and six. We've had some inflationary updates, we've not had a full comprehensive relook. Those would be done, but they're really totally separate, and one hand, they are what they are. We have to get the water from point A to point B, or the wastewater from point A to point B, and it's much more developer-specific. And so, where you could wait until you have absolutely all the answers, I don't think it's necessary. We have an opportunity to lower fees with the traffic now, and the decision for the parks, you don't really have a choice. You're going to pay for parks, you're going to pay for wastewater. You have to have one of them. I'm going to need to remind you which one that is. So, I think you, you have to have water. So, I think they're really independent, it'd be nice to know all the answers, but I don't think we need to wait until we know absolutely everything, um, because as soon as we figure it out, somebody else is going to change something, honestly.
Like Daryl said, we can always come back and revisit those fees, because it's going to be six, nine months probably before we're done with the water sewer stuff, so we can come back at that point, and if fees are going up, we can revisit and look at the whole fee program. We can come back as often as people want us to review the fee program, every year, every six months, or however often you want. Just because we adopt something or you adopt something in February doesn't mean it's cast in stone. It certainly is, we could, something we can adjust in the future as we go forward, and as we get more information on sewer, water, and drainage, we can revisit other things as well at that time.
I think the reason that this is so important to me is because I think this is the way we turn around, or at least make a difference in the unemployment. I know in this, in this town, we have a lot of people involved in construction, so the sooner we can get something going, the better we are as far as helping the citizens with jobs and, then it- So the sooner we can get something going, the better we are as far as helping the citizens with jobs and then it trickles down to the revenue. So it's not just saying, we want more houses here. That's really not what it's about. It's what's the ultimate effect of that with jobs, with, with businesses, with, you know, the whole, the whole nine yards. So that's, that's why it's important to me that we really look at these and look at the effect they will have on the, on the building industry. I mean, we're in the situation we are now because, largely because of what's happened with the housing industry. You know, it affects so many people, so many people. So I, that's why it's important not to make Mr. Guthridge any wealthier or keep money in his pocket.
You know what? That issue of jobs, we've been down that path before, and we've already discussed it in detail. It's already been proven is that you can't force these developer to buy, or to hire people from, from within the city. So that argument that about bringing jobs to the community, it's, you know, I mean, you can't guarantee it. Because more times than not, they, like we've said in the past, and you've heard it as well as I have, is these developers, these subcontractors, they come in with their own crews, and they don't always come from Galt. So just because you build a project in Galt, doesn't mean our citizens are going to get those jobs. I wish that were the case. I believe Councilman Meredith had brought a proposal forward in the past that would have, you know, would have helped us in that area. But as the council members on this, council voted against it. So, you know, I'm going to have to argue with you on that issue about bringing jobs to community. When it comes to the projects. Because it doesn't, it just doesn't hold water anymore.
This isn't a political issue, is what Andrew said versus what I'm saying. I know there's a lot of people that are in the construction industry that live in this town. And maybe they do work out of town, but they still live in this town, they're able to pay their mortgage and stay here. I'm not saying it's going to bring jobs to just people that live in Galt to work in Galt. I'm just saying overall. But, you know, that's not what we're here about to discuss that. I'm just saying, that's why it's important to me that we look at the effect on the industry.
Because one of the, one of the arguments against the local hiring ordinance was the fact that council didn't feel comfortable subsidizing getting work for local residents on the backs of other taxpayers by increasing the overall construction cost. But by artificially lowering the fees, that's essentially what you're doing. You're saying, we want to create jobs in the construction industry, but we're going to push off the burden of underfunded infrastructure for years so that eventually the ratepayers will pick up the tab.
Well, that's, that's why I'm not-
It's a contradiction.
Yeah, that's why I'm not proposing doing that. I'm proposing agreeing on a valid list so the numbers aren't artificially inflated by projects we don't support, or at least the majorios. So back to there, either we start going through the list so we can come up with a number, or if people want some further amount of information before we do that.
We've heard one project that was suggested by Councilmember Claire, which was the aquatic center.
Yeah, I don't think it's fair to just pick and choose at this moment without having sat down and discussed them. Because I think you really need to go over all of them together and in detail. Because you may see one project you don't want, but as you go through the list, you may come back to it and say, well, wait a second. We may need that project. Or there may be, this project may become a priority over the other one, depending on the circumstances. So if we're going to do this, I want to go back to what Daryl originally said. Let's get some more information, bring it back, and then let's go through them. But let's do it together in a single night, or however long it takes, but in a package.
Jayden had a question.
Right. Let me, let me kind of get to reiterate what I said, but also say it a little bit different way. On the, the traffic side, northeast area and the general government fees, those largely are set and dictated by the general plan. And I would not recommend taking anything off that list. Because the thing, the time you do that, you're going to create major problems in your, in your circulation programs. And the fact that those fees are already coming down, but I think it's safe to say the council could move forward with those, the parks fees, that's all dependent on your park master plan, which has not been adopted yet. And that needs to come back to the council. And the whole discussion about what you want in your park master, in your park master plan can be revisited before you revise these fees. So maybe what the council wants to do is put the whole park fees to the side, because we're still working on that program. Bring back that park master plan a couple of months from now when we're ready to do, move that forward. And move forward just with those other fees, the potential a little bit less controversial. And because again, we don't have a park, adopted park master plan. That one is going to be coming back. And that'll give you plenty of opportunity to then comment, take a look through the list, see if there are things you want to make and change before we ultimately decide on what fee we want to base, to have that master plan based on.
I think we understand what you're saying, but my argument is, for the sake of continuity, we need to be looking at this as an entire document.
But what do you want to look at in the tra, I guess, I don't know how you look at and take projects out of the traffic program. Because otherwise, you have an EIR in your, in your general plan that says, here's what your standard is on your traffic. If you now decide to take something out of that, you've created a huge, major circulation problem in your general plan. So I guess the question is, and what I'm trying to, I guess, get across is, I don't know that we can take anything out of those programs. So I don't know how much value it is to bring you back to discuss something that we really don't have any flexibility in doing.
Well, the fee structure that we talked about at the last meeting, what I heard today from staff was that it would be difficult to do anything other than a set rate across the board. Didn't hear that it was completely impossible. If we looked at other, we could look at other factors in calculating this, is that correct?
In response to your comment, uh, the, 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 looking at how, how we could spread the cost was, was by areas of benefit or zones or things like that. We have some flexibility.
Okay.
But, but from a, but we, we evaluated that, we found that a system, a system approach works, works best, okay? But never, and I, uh, did I suggest that I, I support, uh, uh, city manager one hundred and ten percent. In terms of, the general plan identified, uh, the, the feature of, uh, uh, traffic generation from, from planned growth and the mitigations or the improvements that are identified in the general plan, all the circulation improvements. That's why in my presentation, we said, here's the general plan, here's all the roads, all the intersections, everything that needs to be done as a part of the general plan. And then we interpreted it in, into the TCIP, the traffic circulation network that is directly consistent with the general plan that, that the environmental document said, this, these are the improvements to mitigate full buildout of, 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 of this plan. And, and therefore, all of the improvements, uh, as suggested by Jason, are, are required.
But we do have flexibility with the zones of benefit.
We can, we can select areas that may increase, uh, some areas, uh, be responsible for more cost or, or less. We did take a look at that, and, and there, there is a little flexibility in that. But then, what happens, and is that when you start creating different costs for, or fees in different areas, similar to the, the table that, that came up with in comparisons with, with, uh, other jurisdictions, other cities and counties that have similar fees, all of a sudden, it, it'll create a competition of saying, certain areas are, are less expensive to develop or more expensive than others within your own city. So as you were looking at the comparisons between other cities and being, trying to be very sensitive to that differential, all of a sudden, you're doing the same thing inside your city, which also creates some very significant issues to deal with.
But we do have areas in the city and in our general plan that are more conducive to big box retail because they've got more visibility off of our highway than some of the smaller areas that are, that are designated as residential commercial in the general plan. So I think a zone benefit analysis might be beneficial. And I'd like to keep that flexibility as an entire document when we bring it back in February.
Just, just a word of caution, and, because I don't want to be specific. But, but the more, uh, commercial square footage, or the more development that occurs in specific zones, there's an ability to spread more cost, uh, and, and often the fees go down rather than in, in isolated areas where there, even if the cost of the improvements are not necessarily that significant. If the, if the remaining development in that area is very limited, the cost can be very high. And, and so what you're trying to accomplish by going towards an area of benefit, you may find you're doing the exact opposite.
We may find, but like I said, the goal is to take the entire document, keep the flexibility, and bring it back in February rather than doing what our city manager is suggesting, which is rubber stamp portions of the, portions of this plan tonight and bring back other portions in the future. Keep the plan together, and we, we look at the entire document at a future meeting.
We're only talking about a month here. I don't know why we're ba, I don't understand why we're- I, I just, we're talking about another month.
No, the, the time is not necessarily the big issue. The fees are, are going down, and we, we're trying to lower fees as soon as we could.
Well, one month isn't going to make a difference.
One month is not making, unless you're, unless you're a developer who wants to come in, who's waiting for the fees to go down. The issue you, you're talking about in terms of the equity, it, you were mixing apples and oranges. We're talking about certain fees going down that are not related to the park fee. You're talking about trip generation, which has nothing to do with parks. So you can separate the two, and at the end of the day, you're going to have a combination of fees, you're going to add them up, and that's what the total fee is. There, I'm never going to say, or Andrew, that you typically can't ever do something, because you'll go online and find out with someone who's done it. But it is a possibility. We, we offset trips from commercial to residential, it's done quite a bit. It's an offset factor. You say the people that are driving by, they stop at the store, and they stop at the post office, they get gasoline, then they go home. And so there are some things that we've done that are standard of the industry that allow you to do certain things. Within that, you can assign different trips to different uses. And you have some flexibility within reasonableness to offset trips and costs. You could say someone who's going to a big box center only stops at the little stores next door only because of the big box. If they're not there, they're not going to stop there, they're not even going to go there. So you could attribute a few more trips to the bigger boxes or the bigger stores and, and adjust the fees to a certain degree as long as it, it meets the reasonable test. That is something that we've not totally gone through and looked at how far that could happen. But that's something more on occasion, so use by use, not necessarily a geographical area. As far, that just has to do with the proximity of closest to the roads and how much use they're going to have on that certain road. But we're not looking at a proportionate fee, we're looking at just a flat fee based on trip generation. That's the whole basis for the fee.
I appreciate and understand what you're saying, Greg, but I think to say that, and, you know, what Andrew's saying is to keep, to keep it as a whole and together. And at the same time, bring it back with a little more information. I don't think it's too much to ask to say, bring it back in a month and we'll look at it. I, I think we're just beating a dead horse here. I think it's reasonable.
Okay, I think Barbara had a comment.
Quickly, can you tell me the nexus between charging now in the fees for a future Walnut Creek, or not Walnut, Walnut Avenue overpass? Why are we charging now for something that isn't built?
The suggestion is, uh, uh, consistent with, with the thoughts of Councilman Meredith in, in terms of saying, uh, what we've established is you have a new general plan. And so there's, there's a larger, uh, uh, resource of undeveloped, you know, residential development and, as well as commercial development. If we, if, if we eliminate that, that improvement, the Walnut interchange, or the, uh, the, uh, other improvements to the Simmerhorn interchange and say, we're not going to include that, we're going to take that out of the program. We'll spread the cost of the remaining improvements amongst, uh, that, that resource of current vacant land based on your, your, your newly adopted general plan. At some point in time, when the improvement is in fact necessary, and I can assure you that based on our evaluation, that, that, uh, in, in the, in the general plan process, that that improvement will be required, okay? Both of those. That, that, now what, what has happened is some level of development has occurred, and then all of a sudden, we're saying, okay, the improvement is required. But here's the resource, or the balance of the, of the homes and, and businesses that are left, that we can now spread the cost. And basically, that's what happened between nineteen eighty-nine and nineteen, and two thousand and three. Is that we said, okay, who's left that we can spread this cost to? And so the, and the fees, these were the improvements that were required to build out your general plan. And, and so we, we ended up having to, um, uh, update, and, and the, and the, and the cost did significantly go up. The fees did significantly go up in, in two thousand and three.
Okay, thank you.
If I go back to the presentation you gave us at the last meeting, and you had a slide, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but it was slide eleven. You made proposals for what the new fee should be, and you showed us what the current fee would be. And if we eliminate your recommendation tonight and take no action on the park and recreation fee and adopt the other proposed fees, those fees cover every single thing on the list, even though I don't necessarily agree with the list. We would be a hundred percent covered for each building permit issued, be it residential or commercial, is that correct?
That's correct.
Including the Walnut interchange.
Including the Walnut interchange. And, and also, in terms of the who you're spreading it to, includes the areas that, that now we've expanded the, the area. Not only that's within your past city limits, but now includes the sphere of influence that are part of your new general plan.
Okay. And that is consistent with the general plan, which is, as you've told us tonight, we don't have as much leeway as perhaps I'd hoped we would. Given that, I will make a motion to the council tonight that we adopt those fees minus the park and recreation fee and bring that back for detailed discussion, as many items as the council wants to go through. And that's with the understanding that this whole thing can be revisited another year from now if need be or whatever. But given that those items are supported by the plan you've submitted to us, I move their adoption.
Just for clarification, your motion is to direct staff to go back, finalize the fees, do what's necessary to bring back a final fee for adoption, which would basically put the park fees off to the side for now, and then the other fees would move forward as previously presented by staff, correct?
Okay, is motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second?
Discussion, comments? None, call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
No.
Aye. Now, on the remaining, did you have a projected time of when to come back and work with Jason?
Ask what their ability is. What's your timetable approximate?
To get this back? Because there are no fee increases, I would imagine it would be pretty quick to get this back to the council, correct? Marty, Greg?
None.
Second meeting in February? I think it was the plan originally. I think that's still doable.
Maybe- Just approximate, I wasn't trying to-
Second meeting in February, first meeting in March, most likely.
Okay, council. We'll move to communications. None? We'll adjourn to redevelopment agency, if I could have the roll call, please.
For members Haines.
Here, Claire. Haines?
Here. We both said hey, you're here.
Yeah, okay. I heard Haines. Meredith?
Here.
Sutton?
Here.
Public comment?
There are no speakers.
Uh, information consented items, would you read those, please?
Yes, we have two items. Uh, the first item, approval of the minutes of the meeting of January fifth, two thousand and ten. And number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrant.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Need to approve because I think calendar is recommended.
Second.
I'm seconded, uh, for the discussion. None, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. And now we will adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council. City Clerk's report.
Just a couple reminders, on January twenty-first, there will be a beautification committee meeting at three-thirty in the City Hall Community Room. On January twenty-fifth, there'll be a public meeting for the planned improvements to the State Route ninety-nine, State Route one oh four, Twin Cities Road Interchange. Uh, that will be held five-thirty in the Police Department Community Room, the Pescetti Room. On January twenty-seventh, there's a Public Safety Committee bi-monthly meeting at seven o'clock in the Pescetti Community Room. On the twenty-eighth, the Commission on Aging Meeting, five fifteen, in the California Room at the Parks and Rec Department. And January thirtieth, the thirty-annual Winter Bird Festival at McCaffrey Middle School. That takes us, I missed one, February first, Galt City Council Youth Committee, six o'clock in the City Hall Community Room, which takes us to our next- o'clock in the City Hall Community Room, which takes us to our next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Staff report? Start with Jason.
Uh, yeah, at the last meeting, I brought up the concept of creating a two-by-two for the fire district. I know Councilman Haynes was absent, but, uh, fire district's interested in getting something started, and it would be, we could, you know, have a first meeting, figure out how often people wanted to meet. I don't think it would necessarily need to be a frequent meeting, but just to keep the lines of communication open with-
Part of it or something.
Yeah, with the Kasuna CSD, and so there'd be staff from both sides and, and, as well as two board members from the CSD, and then two council members. So wanted to open up to the council to see, one, if you're interested in establishing a two-by-two with, uh, for ongoing, not necessarily for any current issue, just for ongoing things, communication. Um, and then if you are interested in establishing that, if there are two council members that would be interested in serving on that.
Okay. I know in the past, we've done it, and it was like ten or three, four, three o'clock in the afternoon or something, is that kinda what we were doing?
The last time we had anything, at least since I've been here, is when we were in the, um, settlement discussions with the CSD, I believe.
Couple years ago.
Um, Councilmember Haynes and, uh, Councilmember Claire, I think, were on the committee at that point. And then once the lawsuit was resolved, the, the committee kind of disbanded, and we haven't had any meetings since then.
Um, and we'd done it before with, actually with Daryl and I that were on it too.
Okay.
When we were starting, when the conversion was going from Galt Fire over to-
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yep.
Freeway.
I think it's a good idea, and I think I said at the last council meeting, I think Mayor Shelton, given being mayor and given his career, ought to be one of the two, and whoever the other person would like to be.
I think I'd like to be a part of it. I know before, I was a little disappointed when we didn't pick it up again after the, uh, lawsuit issue had been resolved, so.
Thank you.
All the same, anyone else? Not sure, like included?
No, that's good, and I will, I'd like to be on that too, and we're on the Safety Committee too.
Okay.
So done. We'll just work it out, so with your work and like, like you said, it's like three or four times a year.
Yeah, I'll talk with the CSD. We'll get them, make sure they have a couple people pointed, and we'll get with everybody's schedules, and we'll set up the first meeting.
Okay.
So everybody, is council okay with that, that appointment?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments by staff? None? We'll go to comments by city council members, Vice Mayor Payne.
I have no comments tonight.
No comments?
Um, a couple quick things, there's quite a bit going on right now, and there was a hearing today on the High Speed Rail program, so I don't really have any details or reports, but that's a pretty heated topic that's at the Capitol right now, and, and because they're beginning to go through the various meetings, and I think you should've all gotten a mail or also.
Got something.
Yeah, okay. Um, SECOG this week, I'll be, uh, completing my term as Vice Chair of SECOG, so I'll, uh, two days from now, I'll be the final meeting as Vice Chair of that organization, and revert to a regular guy again. And, uh, I'll stay on, uh, Climate and Air Quality Committee, because of my role also at that other board and some of those issues. Um, I'll be in Washington DC, as we mentioned, gonna meet with, uh, PD Bitch before he comes out here, so he'll be out here also to meet with you folks.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, we'll keep working on how that's gonna proceed as far as appropriation requests and all. So those are the main items.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Haynes?
Yeah, I wanna mention, I get the year-end police report, very impressive for you, for those of you who haven't seen it, it's, uh, the second year with considerable decreases in crime. Um, my hat's off to the chief and the police department, they're doing an outstanding job, considering the resources they have, so keep up the good work. Uh, I'm glad to see we're moving in that direction. Um, another thing is, I see Little Caesar's Pizza's taken an interest here in Galt, so, uh, that'll be something nice to add to our, uh, list of restaurants here. Still looking for the Steakhouse, but still holding out.
Yeah, they're working on it.
For those of you who haven't been over to Long John's and KFC, I recommend it, it's, uh, I've been over there a couple of times already, it's nice to have, uh, something different in town.
They're busy too.
They're very busy. And by the way, just so you, I was talking to, went over to the Quickie Loop and had my wife's car's oil changed, and, uh, the gentleman I was talking to told me, said that since they opened, they're getting about ten new, ten more, uh, oil changes a day. So they're picking up, so you can see a little bit of traffic and, you know, a little overflow there, that's, uh, it's all paying off, so that's a big benefit. That's all I have.
Get your oil changed, have lunch.
You gotta have it, that's right.
Councilmember Meredith?
The only thing notable I had, uh, today, our city manager, myself, and our Community Development Director, Kurt Campion, met with, uh, representative from Solar Power Inc. They're the company that's, that have negotiated the power purchase agreement with Smod and Aerojet out at the Aerojet property. I think he said there's about thirty thousand solar panels on that project.
Huge.
Um, we met with them to discuss the feasibility of possibly doing something in Galt that was similar, that would be a, a cost benefit to the city. Sounds like there are some options that we have, and I'll be bringing it up during our, uh, during our goal-setting session in the upcoming month.
Okay, good.
With the, with the drastic increase that Smod is looking at in the next couple of years with utility rates, and the fact that we're looking at an increase in our demand out at the water treatment plant thanks to the ultraviolet disinfection that, that we went with for our filtration process, it seems feasible for the city of Galt to, to come up with some way to, to protect ourselves from those Smod increases, and this might be the way to do it.
Okay. One thing I was gonna mention, you might just ask them about, um, when we'd originally talked about some possible projects, we also looked at Liberty High School, they have a low area by the creek that's a flood plain, they can't develop in it, but the solar company said they could put panels across there on three-foot risers, for example. And the few times a year there is any water, wouldn't get up to the panels, but all that land has no other, at least no one thought of a use for it. And you could put solar panels right there that'd be tied right into the high school, so they could also generate, so you might ask them if that's feasible.
Yeah.